Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid-11 Avenue, 4th floor Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning everyone and welcome to the October 7th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Man, this month is flying by already. I have the dog this morning. Oh boy, this one has so much energy. We have a four-year-old black lab mix, very sweet. Somebody cropped his tail off, not sure why, but he is a sweetheart. He's gonna make somebody a wonderful pet. He just wants to be loved and if you're looking to lose a few pounds, I'm sure he would take you on many walks, so get your exercise. Come here baby. She wants to go home with you. Is it a male or a female? I'm sorry, I forgot. Female, female. Yeah, she's really cute. So come down to the dog kennel, take her home. She will be available on Saturday. If you're looking for other dogs, just check out our Facebook page. We have lots of them to pick from, so we're about thirty-some dogs? Thirty-two dogs, so we need your help. Come down and see us, thanks. That's kind of out of sync here this morning. Okay, I am going to be reading out of Colossians 3, 5 through something or another. So put to death the sinful earthly things lurking within you, having nothing to do with... Oh no, that's not the one, sorry. That's not it. There we go. Since God chose you to be the holy people he loves, you must clothe yourself with tender-hearted mercy, kindness, humility, gentleness, and patience. Make allowances for each other's faults and forgive anyone who offends you. Remember the Lord forgave you, so you must forgive others. Above all, clothe yourself with love which binds us all together in perfect harmony. And let the peace that comes from Christ rule in your hearts for, as members of one body, you are called to live in peace and always be thankful. Amen. Okay, sorry about that. Madam Clerk?
We have a drawing today for two rain barrels. If you want to do that now, we can do that.
Sure, fun stuff. Maybe we should have our new Commissioner pull some names.
I got drafted.
You got drafted, yeah.
Is that how the draft works? Okay. I've just been handed a cheat sheet here. Okay, are these the official rules and regulations or what? Okay, it says we're having a drawing today for the two rain barrels that were located at the Commissioner's tent and the Soil and Water Building at the Lorraine County Fair, which by the way, we didn't have much rain this past week. Fair, fair week. A rain barrel is a system that collects and stores rainwater from your roof that would otherwise be lost to runoff and diverted to storm drains and streams.
This one was the entries from the Commissioner's tent?
Okay, this is the entries from the Commissioner's tent.
There's a few hundred in there.
There's a lot in there.
You made over nine hundred contacts at the fair.
Nine hundred, wow.
Wow, you made two people happy, Matt, and make eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight really unhappy. Go ahead, pull.
That's why I don't like to do these. So anybody who went to the fair has another reason to be mad at me, I guess. Okay, here we go. Drill weight up. Pull from the bottom here. No, you want me to open it? Okay. The winner of the rain barrel from the Commissioner's tent would be Amy Lake of Miriam Road in Wellington.
Oh, good. Lorraine County resident, good.
Wonderful, Lorraine County resident, yeah.
They didn't have to be from Lorraine County then, it could've been from anywhere.
Okay, so that's that winner. Exchange. Great. Is this how the game show people get sort of...
Yeah.
Is that a cheat sheet?
It says this box...
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, this box contains the entries for the rain barrel that was located at the Lorraine County Pipe Table and the Soil and Water Building. Okay, and the winner is?
Drum roll.
Where's the drum roll? I don't know. They'll pick from the middle this time. Okay, I think I've got one. Looks like Ann Klunzinger from, wow, I can't read that street. Quenland, Queensland, in Illyria, but there's a phone number there.
Good.
So, yeah.
Congratulations to those two winners.
We got two local winners of the rain barrels.
Thank you.
Don't need to bring in an accounting firm to certify everything. You want that too? Here you go.
Thank you, Don.
Picking on the rookie, drafting the rookie to make all those enemies. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Do we want to do Lisa now?
If you'd like.
Lisa, are you ready?
That doesn't matter to you, I can do it now or...
Sure.
Yeah, come on up.
Be great. Just so my colleagues know and the folks at home, obviously, we've been working with the State Treasurer's Office for the Ohio Checkbook Initiative, which is an initiative designed to increase transparency in government in the state of Ohio. Lisa has, like she doesn't have enough work to do, she's been working extremely hard on this project with the Treasurer's Office and we've been through a number of conference calls and downloading information and revising, formatting and everything else to make everything work. And this is, it's a growth process, you know, and I think the Treasurer's Office is making adjustments as it goes and we're working closely with them to make it work. But this will be a real opportunity for residents of Lorraine County to, in essence, look at our checkbook. And I think the important thing to point out, and Lisa will stress this too, is that, you know, this checkbook is the County Commissioner's checkbook, so it's not the Treasurer's checkbook, the Auditor's checkbook, whatever the case may be. This is what we are directly responsible for. We stood in this room, trying to think when it was, back early in the year, was that February?
May, was it May?
Was it May? Okay, I thought it was even earlier than that. But, and made the announcement that we were going to be working on this and so we wanted to have a brief presentation today so that taxpayers will know. And Ernie's done a great job of hooking up the links and everything so that folks can go to our website and then through the link process get access to take a look at the County Commissioner's checkbook. So I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Okay. Ernie already has it up here, but there's a link obviously on the Commissioner's website here. And it's right here underneath News and Announcements. Just click on it. I'll, to kind of piggyback a little bit off of what Matt said, this site is only for the departments that the Commissioners oversee. So you're not going to get any information for the county auditors, anything for the courts, the prosecutor, the recorder. It's only for the departments that you, as the Commissioners oversee. I also wanted to stress that if the public is going on here to try and get a picture of the total general fund budget or the total general fund expenditures, you're not going to find it here because it's only departments under your realm, which, you know, there's solid waste, airport, transit, 911, Golden Acres, just to name a few of what's underneath you. So when you first log into the screen here, this is what you'll see. These are bars. We have all of 2014 and the first half of 2015. We'll be updating the site twice, or I'll be updating the site twice a year. We're going to do January through June and then July through December. So this will be updated again probably January, late January to reflect all of 2015 expenditures. And this is only expenditures, there's no budget figures, there's no revenue figures, it's only expenditures. Up in here is the Help button. If you click on this, I think, I believe for first-time users, because I've been on here so much, but I think I only saw it the first time, this, there's like a tutorial that will automatically show up and kind of walk you through it. It's pretty self-explanatory if you need help that way. Your Welcome message, this is the one I was looking for. So if you want to take a tour here, it kind of just shows you different, it kind of walks you through anything that you might want to do. Rather than go through all that, I'm just going to kind of give a brief summary of what you can see in there. Also underneath the Help, if anybody is on this site and they need, they have a question, get out of this, they can fill out this form here and everything gets emailed to me and then I can research it and get back to that person. So I thought that we would choose, as you can see over here on the side, it all designates which fund, and I thought we would go with the solid waste department. So this shows the amount of expenditure, I'm pointing to the screen like you guys can see me, sorry. Total amount of expenditures for 2014, 2015. And if you scroll down here, we can make that bigger, let me go this way. Over here on the visualizations, if you go off of that, this shows every expenditure for solid waste. And then each one of these columns here, you can break down even further. So if you want to just see everything that, say solid waste is paid to the Morning Journal, then you can just type that in. Say okay, and then it just pulls up all payments to the Morning Journal. If you want to see an account, say you want to see the supply account. This wasn't working too good for me yesterday in this column, so let's see where we get, and we didn't get there. So up here, you could go back. If you scroll down here, it gives you your check amount. Over here in the columns, this is where you can decide what information you want to see in this spreadsheet here. So you've got your account, which is the advertising printing, you've got your check amount here, your check date is in this first column which is behind this screen here, your fund, which we know is solid waste, and your journal description and payee name, which we know is the Morning Journal. If we wanted to maybe add the entire account code, come out of there, scroll over, and then there's your account code, which that 7220 for our bookkeeping purposes designates advertising and printing. If there's anything that you guys want to stop and have me try and do for you on this, there's a lot that you can drill down on, so it's pretty much up to the individual when they get on the site to decide what they want to see and how they want to see it. Let me see here. Oh, I know what I wanted to do. If you click, say within this area here of the Morning Journal, you can do a search that way rather than do it like I did on the top by typing it in. If you want to look at the check details, this will give you the check date, which was the 29th of this month, or this year, 29th of June, check number, who it was made payable to, and the amount. Let's X out of there. I think there's, we can put in invoice information here, the invoice number. Now that's now added. And that's over here. And sometimes that's not really going to tell you anything, sometimes, and this is all derived off of our Oracle Expenditure Report within the county. So sometimes there may be a broader description in there, you know, advertising for Lorraine County Fair, advertising for... Nine times out of ten, it's going to just be an invoice number, which if they wanted to drill down on that, that's when they would have to contact me and ask me exactly what was this for. Is there any, I mean, it's kind of...
How difficult was it for it to go from Oracle to this?
There is, I have three pages of instructions to format our expenditure report to what... It's actually a company, open.gov, out of California that the State Treasurer's Office is working with that's setting all of this up. So they've been very helpful and they sent me three pages of...
Instructions?
Instructions on how to convert our data so that it meets theirs. One thing I did want to point out, and it may work on here, but we were having an issue with, you know, if you wanted, if somebody out in the public is on the site and they want to download something, I'm going to try it here, I don't know if it'll work. For whatever reason, I can't get it to download to Excel on my computer because it's a CSV file, so let's see if it does it here. Now in here, it's doing it. So it must just be a glitch on my computer. But they can even download all that and format it themselves and print it out and do whatever they want to do with it. There's also a link on here to go to, and this is only Commissioner's salary information. This link here will take you to the State Treasurer's Office. And you can punch in a name, and Commissioner Lundey and I decided it on the name that we're going to use. Because everybody knows what the Commissioners make, right? So we're going to do a search. Scroll it down, and this just shows his gross wages. Now, because you guys really aren't set at an hourly rate, that kind of fell in there, anybody that, you know, just gets like a flat amount for their pay. So you can type in the name, if you wanted to just look overall at who's out here, which I'm sure that's probably going to be the norm, you could just click, we only have 2015 out there by the way. Click Search, you could scroll down and it'll show any, all the employees that we have out there for this year. So is there anything, I mean, I could go on and on with this...
There's a lot of information on there.
Yeah, I could go on and on with this, but I think it would, it's, when the public gets out there, if they have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, but it's out there for all to see now.
They're going to play with it anyway.
Yeah, they're going to, exactly.
Same thing you have done for six months trying to make this work.
Right.
Great job, Lisa, put a lot of hard effort into it.
There is, I do have a password and everything to this, so I will be able to go on and track and see how many people are going on and looking at this information. I can do it over a seven-day period, a 30-day period, or... So I'll be, what I'm going to try and do, and I think Ted and I were talking about this yesterday, I went on there and looked and it, was it 21 or 28 people? And I said probably 18 of that is me because I was going in there testing things and looking at things. So I'm going to try and leave it alone now that we've done this and see how many people have gotten on it, maybe like in the next week or two, and then I can let you guys know.
That's great.
Okay?
Great job.
Yeah, I just really want to thank you, Lisa, because I know there are a lot of logistics we had to maneuver through and, you know, Lisa's got more than enough work to do. She didn't need this additional project. But, great job on that. And Ernie, thank you for all your technical help and making sure we were going to link and have everything set up there, but certainly would encourage the public to check that out and, you know, we hear about it all the time about folks want to know how we're managing the money, spending the money, so on and so forth, and it doesn't get any more transparent than that. And thanks for using me as an example. And that's not my hourly wage, by the way.
No, absolutely not.
It's the way the categories work out.
I wasn't going to do that, but I did really want to pinpoint any one individual.
Yeah.
Trust me, that's probably what they're going to be looking for anyways, that information.
Exactly. Well, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
No advances, no reprimands, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
No travel bills?
Were there bills? So moved.
Second.
The wait, the...
Uh huh.
Oh yeah, okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes is not here, we just have one item on our Personnel Summary Sheet and everybody's signed it, so I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Approve away the reading of the minutes of September 23rd and 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Adjust the salary of the clerk courts effective September 29, 2015, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 141.04, and the increase of the judge's salary which reflects the county's chief of share for lay municipal court will be $1,567.20 and will be the same for Larry Municipal Clerk Court.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Accept the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Reject the bids received for parking lot repairs and pavement replacement, juvenile detention center and parking lot repairs, pavement replacement and drainage improvements at Job and Family Services. Authorize clerk to re-advertise, notice being in ChronoCon October 19th and 26th, nope, 2:00 PM on November 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreeing with Cronus, Boston, Massachusetts, the amount $11,083.59 for the annual maintenance of software, equipment support and training subscription for the timekeeping system. And authorize director to execute in behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approve last reform.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Recorder, authorize Lorraine County Attorney to continue special fund per Ohio Revised Code's Section 317.09 and 317.321 for fees imposed by Lorraine County Recorder for the purpose of supplementing equipment needs of the County Recorder on a annual basis effective January 1st, 2016, expiring December 31st, 2016, in the amount of $3 per recorded document.
I'd like to move that we hold this another week, I'm still doing some homework and research on this.
Okay.
Is that...
That's fine, yeah.
Yep.
Under the Sheriff, award 2016 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program grant for $24,015.50 and 2016 Impair Driving Enforcement Program grant for $36,023.25. Grants are for the Ohio Department of Public Safety as a reimbursement grant for overtime costs for deputies working designated traffic blitz, effective October 1st, 2015 through September 30, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Approve an entry in a various agreement, Siemens, effective retroactive July 1st, 2015, one for the HVAC maintenance, the amount of $35,273 for years one and two, and years three, four, and five will be $36,855, and the fire alarm test and inspections, the amount of $15,489 per year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning.
Commissioner's report.
Well, last Thursday, I attended my Community Corrections Board meeting over in Jim Meraldi's office. We have a roundtable of all people involved in corrections and we had a really good discussion on all kinds of matters. Then, let's see, this past Saturday was our Goodwill fundraiser, which Commissioner Kahlo attended, and he was playing some craps, was it? Made some money on the craps table, you take the money that you win at the gaming and you put it into tickets, and he left me his tickets and ended up winning the big screen television. So congratulations to Mr. Kahlo.
Thank you.
You got to get it out of my car.
Yeah, I will today.
Okay. And then, actually today, what Goodwill is all about, they're not just about their stores and selling donated items, they take that money and they turn it into trying to help people get jobs. And today, they are having their job fair over at the Midway Mall from 10 to 2 today. So if you're looking for a job, go over there, they're going to have plenty of employers there. Some people get hired on the spot, so take a ride over to the mall today. And actually, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, very nice event.
Oh, actually, one more thing before we go on. I did post on my Facebook, I know you saw that, we just celebrated a year of not putting dogs down at the kennel due to space. We used to have to, especially in the summertime when we get very full, we'd have to euthanize dogs just because we didn't have enough cages to keep them in. So because of our volunteers and our rescue groups and people that foster these dogs, we have not for a year now had to put any dogs down due to space, and our staff too. We have a great staff that works together with these individuals and I just want to give a shout out to all those people who do their very best to make sure that these dogs get a good home. Now I'm done.
Okay, yeah, very nice event Goodwill had. Yeah, very busy week. I'd like to thank our Lorraine County Growth Partnership. We kicked off Manufacturing Month last week. I'd like to thank Chronicle Telegram for hosting the event. We had a great turnout, about 65 people. Commissioner Lundey was there also, really good speakers, and it's always an honor to kick that off. Manufacturing is what drives our economy here in Lorraine County and we need to keep expanding that. Also attended, Lorraine International had a nice event last week at Texas Barbecue, kicking off the 50th year of Lorraine International. So again, congratulations to them. I had an opportunity on Saturday, opening comments for the Illyria NAACP Freedom Fund, sort of a different type of evening. The speaker wasn't able to make it, he was stuck due to weather in New York. They rerouted him from Syracuse to Rochester, Rochester, Chicago, so he Skyped in from a bathroom.
Wow.
Dr. Strayhorn from Ohio State University.
God love technology.
I'm telling you, you did a heck of a job. You did a great turnout, I mean, it was just, the place was packed. Wayne Dawson was the emcee, did a very nice job. Again, just congratulations to Dee Tolbert and everyone with the NAACP, great event. Team Lorraine County Executive Committee met on Monday, going over issues as the new direction since attraction isn't quite the thing to do anymore, on how they're going to work on business retention and expansion and, you know, just redirecting the organization. Like to thank Legal Women Boulders, Lorraine County Community College in PSI. Last night, I was part of a panel discussion in regards to Issue Two and Issue Three. It was a two-hour event, we ended up going about two hours and 40 minutes, had a crowd of about 45 or 50 there, but thank them. Legal Women Boulders do a great job here in Lorraine County, so...
Want to say what Two and Three are?
Yeah, Issue Two is basically HJ4 that the House and the Senate rushed in to put on the ballot, eliminating the ability under certain criteria in five paragraphs, not allowing citizens' initiatives to go to the ballot, and if they go do, there's a lot of strings attached. And Issue Three is the yes on medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, so those were two issues we spoke about, panel of six of us, so. End of my report.
Commissioner Lundey?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate our Lorraine County Growth Partnership, we're putting on an excellent event, Manufacturing Month event, and also like to thank Chronicle Telegram for hosting that event. And, you know, manufacturing's our strength here in Lorraine County. I always say, whatever you need built, bring it here, we'll build it for you. We're good at building things and we have a, you know, strong work ethic as well. But also trying to attract millennials and others to the manufacturing industry, there's, you know, lots of needs for the industry.